Okay, so we will call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Monday, October 18th. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, we are meeting remotely. And the Zoom link was provided via meeting posting. Also, the committee and audience members know that this meeting is being recorded. We will do a roll call, so I don't see Dave, but we have Dave. Jess?
Here.
June?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Mike? I think he's joined yet. Randy?
Randy was here.
I thought I saw her.
Let me see if she's in the... Hold on, it's updating.
I've lost Randy. Let's see, Susan, Tom?
Here.
And I am here. All right, that's what's... Five, so that's still a quorum.
You don't wish you weren't.
Yep, I don't see her either. All right. I'm just sending Mike a link. All right, so our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee, we held at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 1st. For the consent agenda, we have the approval of the October 4th minutes account payable warrants, payroll and payroll warrants. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa and Tom? All right, so Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you.
Craig, Randy's joining and she had just lost internet connection. So she'll be coming in soon.
Thank you. All right. For public communications, we did not have anybody submit to speak this evening. So we will move on to reports and information items. Superintendent Morgan?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So just a few updates, the facility study, just to keep everyone abreast as to what's going on. We had 48 registrants for the online, for the online sessions, and it ended up being broken into two groups. Only 12 showed up for each session. But according to the Collins Center, there was some good discussion. The survey itself is going well. We have 863 respondents as of this morning. Pepperell and Ashby are already on their way, sending, sending the surveys out to the community. Initially, it was just going out to community members of school age kids that were in Aspen. But now it's going out to the full community. Same is happening in Townsend. It's just taking a little bit more time. But the hope is to get those surveys out to all community members in the coming days. Did want to update the school committee on the possibility of a mobile vaccination clinic. Rick Metcalf and the Neshoberg Associated Boards of Health reached out, and he's working in collaboration with the Townsend Board of Health to offer a mobile COVID-19 vaccination clinic, looking at utilizing a portion of the North Middlesex Regional High School parking lot. It'll be essentially a trailer type setup on a Friday afternoon or evening. I will be giving, I will be given a two weeks' notice, heads up, just so I can advertise that. Wanted to essentially find out from the committee, is there any issue with that? This is just essentially, you know, up to community members, up to anyone that's age appropriate. Obviously, if it's a minor, they have to have parental permission. But this is something that's just going to be offered on school grounds. It is something that the Board of Health, both the Neshoberg Associated Boards of Health and the Townsend Board of Health have been pushing for, for a while. And feel it would certainly be a good thing to do if we still have residents that are struggling, getting appointments and finding, you know, an easier way, something more local, to get a vaccination.
Any questions from the committee on that?
Okay, if there, if there are committee members that have an issue with it, all I ask is that you please reach out to me in advance, you know, probably, I would say, by the end of the week, because they are going to look at setting a date. And again, this date, they're going to give, they're going to give us a two weeks' notice. It's going to have minimal impact, if any impact on school at all, because they're looking for a Friday afternoon into early evening. And again, it's going to be open for any members of the community to, and families to bring their kids who have to come in themselves and get vaccinated if they so desire. It will not be something that's happening inside the school itself.
And prior notification, go out to the, I assume we go out to the school committee, or the school community prior to that?
As soon as I, as soon as I get the date, it's going to go out. Yeah, so as soon as I get the date, it will go out. And again, I'm assuming everyone's going to have two weeks' notice, because as soon as I get the date, I will send it out to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just a couple other things, just to remind essentially the public and anyone that's on the call, and also committee members, that we've already had one of our Fall Parents Caregiver Information Series nights. We did have a college one last week for any high school age parents and students. But we are continuing into next week. We have How to Manage Teen Mental Health, which I think is going to be a pretty hot topic, especially with the past year and a half in managing mental health, which has always been somewhat of a concern with all the stresses on kids and families today, but also even more so now with COVID. And Dr. Dan Rosa from the Chumsa Public Schools, who's a clinical psychologist, is going to be coming in and essentially meeting with parents. So it's going to be held on Tuesday, October 26th, and at the PAC at North Middlesex Regional High School, beginning at 6:30 PM. I will send out a reminder this weekend, just reminding parents that that's coming up. Dr. Rosa also has a private practice locally and has done these types of presentations throughout Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Then on Wednesday, November 3rd, we have an Internet and Social Media Safety Specialist coming in, Katie Greer. Katie Greer is a national presenter. She's been on several major news networks. She's presented in several school districts that I have been in. And this is essentially a presentation that is going to be geared for parents and caregivers and their students at the middle school levels, excuse me, middle and high school level. She will be presenting at the high school on that particular day. Unfortunately, we could not make it work for the middle schools as well. But again, parents and their students, middle and high school up, can come to that night, and it's Katie Greer. She has a website. If you're interested, it's K.L.Greer, K.L.G.R.E.E.R.com. And again, she does an outstanding job just talking about social media, how to manage it, pitfalls, things to be careful of, things of that nature. And then lastly, the last evening is Wednesday, November 10th. How do we create a safe and welcoming, welcoming schools for all students? How can we support our LGTBQ students with Jeff Parati from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? And again, it's just on creating a safe school climate. Jeff has done a tremendous amount of work statewide. And again, he will be available for parents and caregivers of all grade levels. This is, this is not something that the students would be coming to, but it would be something for parents and caregivers, K to 12. So I will send out a reminder again this week. And all of these events begin at 6:30 PM at the High School Performing Arts Center, just something that's centrally located, and it can certainly handle a good-sized socially-distanced crowd if need be. Lastly, I do just want to congratulate a National Merit Scholar. We have a student from North Middlesex Regional High School, Zachary Astor, who's been named as a commended student by the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. Around 34,000 students nationwide have been recognized as commended students. Commended students placed among the top 50,000 scores and more than 1.5 million students who took the 2020 Preliminary SAT National Merit Qualify, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Astor received a letter of commendation from the, from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. At North Middlesex High School, Astor is a member of the Math Club, Tennis Club, Jazz Band, Wind Symphony, and Relay for Life. He plans to study math and economics in college. Outside of school, he works at Doherty's Garage as a gas attendant. I'm sure the committee will join me in congratulating Zachary on this incredible accomplishment. So again, congratulations to Zachary. There is a press release going out to that effect. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Well, congrats to Zachary. That's amazing. Good job. I have a question. Back on the Collins Center, I guess, focus groups that they did, you said 48, was it 48 community members registered? Was that total or for both, each session?
So, so there were three sessions initially offered, and 48, 48 people registered in total, but only 12 showed up to each session. So it was not a good showing. The surveys are going well. Like I said, they had, they had 863 as of this morning. So certainly a good number of surveys, but not a good showing at the information sessions.
That's 36 people total, or 12, like 12 in each session, so 36?
24. There were only two sessions that were held because of the numbers. So again, just looking to get that out, and I have sent out a couple information-type things around the facility study. Again, just to keep everyone informed as to what's happening and what the facility study is actually, what the purpose of it is. And I'm sure, I know we have at least one committee member that was at the budget summit that was held last week, our first budget summit. And the message came through pretty loud and clear last Wednesday that, that we as a school district will be asked again to come in at nothing higher than a 5% assessment to any of our three-member towns, which in essence is a budget increase for North Middlesex in the neighborhood of 2%. Anything higher than 2% would put us, would put at least one, if not all, of the member districts over a 5% assessment. And that is seen by all three town managers who were at the meeting last week as something that is unsustainable and cannot continue moving forward. So that's essentially, again, we're trying to find ways to maximize the money and how it's being spent. We're not looking necessarily to cut, but we are looking at ways to maximize the money that we're spending so that we can essentially channel more of that money towards kids and towards necessary capital improvements in the district.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent from the committee? All right. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Next up, old business, we have the 2021-22 School Committee Goals. So at our last meeting, Randy and Lisa graciously volunteered to go off and put together a draft set of goals for the committee to review and discuss. So I will turn it over to them and see what, what that got for us.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Lisa and I met, we had a really long discussion, a good one. We decided on two goals for this year. As we were discussing all the different types of goals that we could have, the two that we came up with, and we did email them to everybody, so they had them in writing, is to start a quarterly school committee newsletter. And this is kind of to address getting information out to the community about what we've done. This isn't looking forward, this is kind of looking back. So it's a recap of our past meetings in the quarter. Any policies and procedures that were reviewed or are now under review from that period, and any voting or discussion results that occurred. This way, there's a record. So if people missed meetings, they can go back, they can see what we're doing. It's a little bit more transparent, and it shouldn't be very difficult to put together. But it may be very good for that communication. We can always expand it to when our next meetings are coming up or some other future information as we go along and kind of develop what it should look like. The second goal that we felt that we should look at is having a professional development retreat for the school committee. When we were looking at specific goals for the committee, it kind of all came down to, it would be really nice if we had a formal setting to discuss a lot of the things that come up on the high level, you know. We don't really have a good forum. It's kind of like, as things come up, we start to discuss the bigger issues. Having a retreat, preferably after the town elections, so that we have the, the new school board together. We can all get to know each other, talk about things, see, you know, you know, make sure everyone's kind of knows where everybody else is as far as our goals for the district. Any, you know, establish any kind of future objectives we want and things like that. So we have on here is just to build our team, establish guiding principles, goals, objectives for our work together, and then to strategize current steps and initiatives as we plan for the future of the school committee. I think if we can make those two things year after year, make them a habit, then we can start to take on more specific goals each year on what we want to accomplish. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or would like to discuss this. I'm certainly open if people have other ideas of what they think the school committee needs to do right now or would like to try and accomplish.
Any questions for Jeff?
I think more information is better than less information. So the more information that we can get out to the parents and people of the community of what we're doing and what we're trying to do, I think I totally support.
Awesome. Thank you, Jessica. Mike?
Yeah, newsletter is a great idea. I think that will help people, you know, realize what we've been doing and kind of consolidate it a little bit. And the retreat, I know we've talked, we talked about that, Randy. God, I don't know who else was maybe in the committee, but maybe what, five? Five or six? I actually remember in the old high school, we talked about it. So, you know, it's something I know we've had on the radar for a little bit. I think that would be good. I think, especially for new members, getting them up to speed and, and how we, you know, what we do, what we don't do, and things like that. I think that would be a great idea.
Yes, Mike, I agree. It has been kind of coming up here and there that we'd like to try and do that, but we haven't accomplished it yet. So I think setting it as a specific goal might get us there.
I think we even talked about even MASC, MASC joining us for that before, I think, right, years ago?
Yep. No, we certainly can.
Yeah.
You know, we can play by ear, have them there for maybe the first one or two to kind of help us get going and get something established on, you know, the types of things that we do and in the exercises we do during the retreat. So I'm certainly open to MASC. They've been helpful in the past.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Lisa?
Mike, we nominated you to do the newsletter.
I'm still waiting for my apple pie, so until then, I'm not doing anything. But I will gladly help where I'm needed.
I don't know. I think it's a great job for the, for the, the co-chair, or the assistant chair, however, whatever we're calling Mike these days.
I agree.
Whatever is needed, I'm happy to help.
I don't see another hand. So I, just one, I think these are, these are great goals. And yeah, I mean, I think, been talking about a retreat since I've joined anyway. So I think that's, that's probably much overdue, which is good. I guess we're kind of in line with the newsletter. And maybe it's just a topic on one of the newsletters is, I'm wondering if we should do a survey to the community to ask how they'd like to receive information. Because I, for me personally, a newsletter, I read infrequently. I'll read some that I get, but I don't know if there's other avenues that folks may, may want to be receiving information, whether it's a post on social media or some other mechanism or frequency in terms of receiving that. So that would be my only suggestion. And again, it doesn't have to be a separate item, but more maybe in our, one of the early newsletters that we have that as a topic to solicit some feedback from the, from the community on how they want to receive that information and be engaged by the committee.
We could share it across all platforms, too. You know, we could type it up as a PDF and share it on social media, email, you know, the various platforms out there.
That's spoken like a true newsletter manager, Mike. That was fantastic.
Well, I did that in eighth grade at Hawthorne Brook. We'll carry on the tradition.
Awesome. Any other comments from folks on the goals? I guess my only other question, Randy and Lisa, in terms of, I guess, ownership of making sure that, that we actually follow through and get these done. Is that going to be the two of you to make sure Mike sends his, the newsletter and that a retreat gets scheduled? Or do we need to assign that out to folks? So how do you want to manage that?
I think as far as the newsletter, if Mike really is volunteering to do this, at least the first one, I think he just takes ownership of it. I don't think he really wants me or Lisa sitting there nagging him. So as far as the newsletter, I would say whoever's going to write it, at least the first one, should take ownership. For the professional development retreat, I could certainly look to do that, but I think if I'm going to take some responsibility for that, I'd want to, you know, co-lead that whole thing with you, Craig, as far as, because you're, you do a lot more of the scheduling for the committee and all that. So just kind of keep you in the loop and work with you on things.
Absolutely. Yeah, happy to do that. That's fair.
Again, I'll get with you. I'll put some things together and maybe for, you know, the first one, I'll work with Randy and Lisa to show you like an outline of some things, make sure it's in line with what you're looking for, and we'll go from there.
Right, yeah. I also envisioned kind of whoever wrote the newsletter, it would get shared with the committee before it got published, just to make sure that people didn't have any issues with it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then we can put that out.
All right, any other comments on the goals before we vote to approve these?
Craig, I just wanted to jump in and say, you know, Mike, I'm also happy to help you with like any of those social media piece and, you know, kind of getting that out there, too.
Hey, thank you.
Next, Tom? Ash Chance? All right, I will.
I will, I will move that the school committee approve the school committee goals for 2021, 2022, starting a quarterly school committee newsletter with Mike Morgan heading that effort up. And a second goal of having a professional development retreat headed up by myself, working with Craig.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions on the goals? I guess my only other comment, just, I just thought of this, looking at the, the number of attendees. Like, I, I know we've gone probably years with meetings being attended by few, if any, members of the public. And lately, it's been great to have members of the public engaged in attending meetings. So I think this is, that goal of a newsletter, I think, is, is the start of finding different ways of engaging with, with the community, starting by putting information out there, and I'm sure that'll evolve over time. So I hope those in attendance tonight will look forward to the newsletter and be providing feedback so we make sure that, that we're communicating effectively and providing the information that, that folks are looking for. Because that's, again, that's, that's the intent of the newsletter. All right, seeing no other questions, so we'll vote on the motion to approve the goals. Dave? I saw Dave, and then he's gone. Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Randy. Okay.
Hold on. Just takes a minute.
All right, I will, we'll let him join back in. Next on the agenda, we have the FY22 budget discussion. Is this Brad, you or Nancy, or?
It's Nancy doing an update.
All right.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
We can.
So I've been in conversations with the town of Pepperell about this year's budget, the FY22 budget. And they've been struggling with a budget deficit this year and have plans for a special town meeting on November 6th. They reached out to us asking if there was a way, anything that the schools could look at, specifically the transportation calculations. We received, when the, when the state set the final budget, there was an increase in the expected revenue for transportation, Chapter 71 funds for the district. And they had reached out asking whether there was any way that the district could certify the new transportation numbers in the town. So we met with the Finance Subcommittee last week and went over that, and I believe, Lisa, I don't want to speak for you, but it sounded like we had their support to bring that forward to the full school committee. There, in your pack, it is a revised revenue projection showing the changes that were made, and it's really three changes. It's the Chapter 71 transportation being added, the charter school reimbursements being reduced, and the minimum local contribution being set to what the state, the final state budget was. So it results in decreases to all three-member town assessments. It's not a change to the school district budget. There's no change in our budget. There's no change in our debt service or transportation. It's just a funding, a change in how we're funding that budget. So the vote, does we, we're not required to recertify the entire budget just to accept the use of those revenue sources for the FY22 budget. So I don't, I think that sums that up. There, there, just in case somebody's not able to see the numbers, I was going to maybe give a quick update on the amounts. The Ashby change in assessment would go down $13,309. Pepperell's goes down $65,521, and Townsend goes down $49,263. And essentially, it's the increase in the transportation of an increase of approximately, well, $154,102 and a reduction in charter reimbursement of $26,000. So a net, a net change to the assessments of all three towns of $128,000.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy on that? All right, do, do we need those numbers in the motion, I assume?
No, you don't need to, you just need to acknowledge that, that the new revenue is provided. And I don't think you need to vote the actual numbers.
Okay. All right, so then I'll take a motion to have the school committee vote to reduce the member towns' assessments by substituting the increase of state Chapter 71 funds, the reduction in charter reimbursement, and the final minimum local contribution rates is approved in the final FY22 state budget.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Lisa and Randy. Any other questions or comments on the FY22 budget update? All right, seeing none, go down the list, Dave. Was that a yes, Dave? I just read static. All right. Oh, thank you, David. Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nancy. Next, we've got Subcommittee Reports. Anything from Accelerated Repair, Lisa?
No.
One of these days, we're going to get Building Committee off of here. Let's talk to Rob on that. Finance, Lisa? Finance, Lisa?
We do have a meeting set for October 28th to discuss goals of the finance committee. That's our next meeting. And that's it for updates.
Thank you. Tom, anything from negotiation or personal?
Nothing on our end, no.
Thank you. Policy, Randy?
We have a meeting this coming Wednesday, so.
I did have a question. I know the public participation policy was on on agenda a while ago, and you, and you guys didn't get to it just because of time. Is that going to come back up?
On the agenda for Wednesday.
For Wednesday? Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, any thing else from anybody on the committee that may have come up? All right. If not, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All right, Lisa and Mike, thank you. All right, so Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night and we'll talk to you all soon.